Okay, call this meeting to order. Let the record show that Commissioner Nelson is the only one absent and everybody else is here. Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have the Scotts' plot regarding the proposed tax rate. Take a record vote and schedule the public hearing.
On the budget, the judge's budget that's on file, we have forty point seven for the general fund maintenance operation, two point four three for foreign market, and six point eight five for the interest and sinking fund. The problem, this was done before we got the certified roll from the appraisal district and before I got B's calculation of effective rates and the rollback rates. Because we have such a, we had such a low rate in the foreign market. We had one point eight. Because of the calculation in the effective rate and rollback rate, the B's calculation of rollback rate is one point eight four. So, we can't adopt the two point four three. But it is over the rollback rate. And so, I don't think you would have any of the public that would get petitions to call elections to reset that rate. But the court needs to be aware of that and make appropriate concession for that. What we would do in that case is if y'all wanted to keep it at or below the rollback rate, then that rate would change and whatever difference there would just be added to the general fund rate.
In the judge's budget, it was at the one point eight or the two?
It's at two point four three. Also, for your consideration, there was discussion about adjusting the rate that's assigned to our debt service. So, if with what's in the judge's budget, if you adjusted that to maintain a million dollars in the interest and sinking fund, then that rate would change from six point eight five to four point one one. And the corresponding difference would be into the general fund. So, instead of forty point seven, you would go to forty three point four four.
The thing with that is when we talked about is if we maintained the million dollars in the interest and sinking,
Right.
our debts there though is still more than what we're collecting.
That is correct.
So, I mean, we need to leave at least that other, like five hundred thousand? Is that about right?
What Matt and I calculated the other day using today's appraised values, the rate that you would need in interest and sinking fund to equalize out the collection for debt is ten point one, ten point four, I think. Wasn't it ten point four cents? So, you can see that we were right in the judge's proposed, but it's six point eight five. And if you adjust it to a million dollars, it'll be four point one one. The following year, you're gonna have to raise that rate to that ten point four.
But what I was saying though is though that if we left a million and this year left another half a million to be able to cover our debt in there, it would seem like the following year, at some point, we're gonna loot, we're gonna end up with three hundred and fifteen thousand from the 2013 tax note.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
So, is it next, is it the following fiscal year? I think so, right? Because it was a five-year note if I'm not mistaken?
No.
Is it seven?
Seven. I'm not positive about that. I didn't bring that.
That because we were at three hundred and fifteen thousand and we did a million, two hundred and, it was a million, two hundred.
Indeed.
So, I could've swore.
I thought it was one point three, but it may have been one point two.
Yeah. So, it was a million, it might have been the one million, two hundred and forty thousand. There was forty thousand dollars to issue the one point two million.
Yeah.
I don't think we went to the one point three.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know what the rest of the court wants to do, but I'd feel more comfortable if we left a million and left enough money in the interest and sinking, at least to cover this fiscal year's shortfall, that we were just at the end of it. You know, does that make sense?
I don't really follow if, so are you saying you would like to leave?
Million and a half.
Million and a half.
Yeah. And I'm just saying because that way, at the end of it, we're really not gonna end up with a million. We're gonna end up with a half a million. Because if we don't leave a million and a half, we're gonna end up with a half a million really because you have.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. Right now in the judge's budget, that's what the balance is. Using the six point eight five, it leaves one point five eight two.
But our beginning balance was off.
Well, I did some calculation. You got, you've got the three point one million that's gonna be paid on SL seventy nine. You've got the five hundred thousand dollars on the library bond that's gonna have to be paid. And you're gonna have the nine hundred and ten line of credit to be repaid.
There was seven, the Monday's meeting, we had seven point eight million dollars in our interest and sinking.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's, we checked it yesterday. That's not what we have now.
What do we have?
We made the three point, we made a three million and six hundred yesterday.
Yeah, but before that, what was the balance?
Okay, on Monday, we had, the papers that we were handed by our treasurer had seven point eight million. And when I took that seven point eight million and I took the report that you handed us on what was left on the payment and I added all that up and subtracted that from the seven point eight, I still came up with three point one million dollars.
Yeah, I'm, I came, I calculated yesterday, actually. I came up with three point six.
So, how much, after that payment, how much do we have now in our INS?
We should have about three point two somewhere.
We should, or we do?
No, we do after we made those.
Did, did you make the library payment also?
Yes, the library and the bond.
So, if you have three point two?
I know about three point seven, so going off of the six point eight, that included the nine ten credit, line of credit that we have.
No, exactly. So, three point two?
Yeah.
Three point two, and we still gotta subtract the nine ten?
Nine ten.
If we left, I guess, if after everything's said and done in interest and sinking and at the end of it, we still ended up with a million dollars. That's what the court had said the last meeting that they'd be comfortable with. I just wanna make sure that we are gonna have a million dollars and we don't have, well, damn, we should have left another half a million because we didn't figure in this debt service or whatever.
No, it's, I mean, those, all the debt services put in the budget that's on file.
Okay, and what really scares me is that when I got my paperwork on Monday, it said seven point eight. When I took out everything that was listed that we needed to take out, I still ended up with three point some odd million and now we're down to two point six. So, what the heck did I miss that wasn't on my sheet? Because I, I mean, everything that we owe should be on them sheets.
Well, you still, you have capital leases that are being paid out there.
But there was a, there was a hundred and some odd thousand dollars and there were seventeen thousand or eighteen thousand still that needed to be paid. But when I took all that, all the on the right-hand column, it still needed to be paid. And I added all that up, subtracted from seven point eight, I still came up with three point. So, I must, there's something in there that, there has to be a magic number that wasn't, that according to you, I mean, there's about six hundred thousand dollars in there that somewhere in my sheet was not in there. That's what scares me. As long as we end up with a million dollars, Frank, at the end of it, I think that's what that court, the court had decided.
I feel pretty confident using the beginning balance in interest and sinking fund. There's gonna be, need to be an adjustment on the general fund beginning cash balance because that was placed in there back in May. So, that number, we need to fine tune that number, which we will do through these budget workshops.
Well, and also, I mean, the court at some point might need to consider raising the property taxes a little bit. I hate saying that, but I mean, we're fixing to spend six, seven hundred thousand dollars probably out at the base.
Hopefully.
I thought you were done. We're being filmed here, Frank. But we're, but we are fixing to spend, you know, hopefully, hopefully, we can do about half a million. But you know, the way it looks, it just looks like it keeps creeping up there.
Yep.
So, if we're spending five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars out of the budget, that's stuff we couldn't have planned for. And I mean, it's gonna hurt us at some point.
Yep.
I think.
Yep. Those are, there's several items that we need to address and put in the budget when we have budget workshops that are in there.
And I plan to have a budget workshop on Wednesday, the seventeenth.
Well, you know, and, but this all really gets to this rate. I mean, we need to come up with a proposed rate type deal.
Well, the first issue we need to address is the foreign market. If we wanna keep it at the one point eight, the problem with the one point eight is it's such a small rate that when you do the calculation on effective rate and rollback rate, because you're limited to eight percent for that rollback rate. So, eight percent of one point eight is a very small number. So, it will take a long time to build that rate up to what it should be. So, at some point in time, the court's gonna have to bite the bullet and say, we need more money in that. But you've gotta realize that could be subject to a petition.
But everybody that we talked to, every time we go out, and I'm sure all of us have the same problem. They want more paving, they want more paving, they want more paving. And when you look overall in our total budget and there's a four million dollar deal or whatever, and only half a million dollars comes from taxes.
Yeah. The, the, the thing, the thing to consider is usually if the public is going to petition the court to set the rate back, it's because the overall rate increased. And in this instance, the overall rate is remaining the same. It's just the allocation is different. So...
What did we do, Frank, on the, on the monies? Did we even look at it? The, for the pipeline? The pipeline that, the district that we set up for that pipeline money, that big eight million that was, there's a tax in there?
Tax rate.
The tax.
I have not, have not addressed that yet. So, that'll, but once that calculation is given to us through budget workshops, then there have to be a.
So, but in posting our proposed tax rate right now, since, I mean, because we didn't, with the district, when we did, when we took that action, we weren't gonna raise the rate. We were just gonna take money out of whatever we had existed.
That's exactly right.
So, as long as these numbers are there and we don't go over this, then we should be able to.
That's exactly right. So, if you adopt the rate that I suggested for, to leave a million dollars remaining in interest and sinking fund, then those rates would be forty three point four four for the general fund, four point one one for interest and sinking fund, and two point four three for the foreign market.
But that would put us over the rollback rate?
Oh, on foreign market.
Going from one point eight to two point four three, that additional five point two three, whatever it is, it's gonna take, bump us up over the?
What we were, before that rate changed, is we were showing a deficit in the road bridge utilizing the budget that's on file of around a hundred thousand dollars. So, that point five cent difference made up that hundred thousand dollars.
And that's what the court had said was we need to balance, we needed to get, we need to make sure that.
If at all possible, we'll try to do that.
And that was one of the discussions in the last workshop.
But you still gotta realize that we are utilizing beginning cash to balance the budget. So, the following year, the interest and sinking fund rate would have to be brought back up. That means if you keep the same tax rate, you're gonna have to lower your M and O rate by about a nickel. And so, that means a million dollars coming out of your general fund.
Going back to the INS, Frank, if we keep one million of the one point two, I mean, three point two, then we're gonna knock off another nine, ten. So, it'll just leave us a little over a million dollars we're gonna draw out from that. And that'll be strictly for debt repayment.
Yeah, I calculated it yesterday and using the cash balance that we had as of yesterday. And with this rate that I'm proposing, it will leave you right at a million dollars.
And that'll be set up to what?
That just is a budget surplus in that number. I also contacted Jeff Kuhn yesterday with Fulbright Jaworski to make sure that that was legal to do that. And it is.
Okay, my question is between October one, 2016 and September thirtieth, 2017, what's going to happen to that one point zero something balance?
If, if this, this budget, if we meet this budget, you will have one million dollars in, as a cash surplus at the end of 2016, 17 fiscal year.
Okay, so you're just looking at having it there in the budget, not targeting it for anything specific?
Not targeting it for anything. All I'm doing is utilizing the tax rate to assure that we will have one million dollars in the interest and sinking.
Right, okay.
Also, by doing that, instead of having a two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar balance in your, in your general fund, your M and O, there would be an additional five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars plus three, plus another six hundred thousand dollars. And if you take capital outlay out of here, that's one point one million dollars. So, you got one point one, five point eight, and, not five point eight, five hundred and eighty thousand and possibly six hundred more thousand. So, that would be your remaining balance in your M and O, which would give you close to two million dollars in cash surplus in your general fund, which would get us to that thirty to forty-five days of operating money in reserve.
In reserve.
I'm gonna go ahead and say it. At some point, our values keep going up. So, we've been lucky enough that, when our values go up, the amount of money we collect goes up. But our tax rate in our reality hasn't gone up for sixteen years, seventeen years, other than the library.
Right.
Other than the library. But the library, but we continue to have major projects that we continue to fund with the same tax rate. You know, and you just can't keep having, you just can't keep doing more with the same because you're.
At some point in time, even though the valuations increase, it's, it's not enough to do the things.
I mean, it seems like every year, there's a major project. We either have to match something or take some money out that's not planned because it's just something that we couldn't plan. This debt, this deal out at the base, it could be a half a million to seven hundred thousand dollars. And I'm not saying, you know, I'm trying to scare the public and say we're raising the tax, but we're not. But our values, the way our values are, yes, we collect a little bit more money, but we can't continue to do. I mean, I think this county's moved, has been moving forward for a long time with special projects and trying to do stuff. But it just, with the same amount of tax rate, it's just getting harder and harder.
Well, the thing is that eventually you're gonna hurt the public more by going with a four, five, six cent increase instead of going a quarter of a penny or half a penny every year or every other year, whatever.
Yeah, a little bit over time is easier to swallow than a big chunk at one time. I had the discussion with a commissioner this, this year about that, the Westgate project. Obviously, everyone is aware of how important the base is to the community. So, if there were ever going to be a tax rate increase, it should come because of the monies that's gonna have to be spent on that project.
No, and that's what I'm saying. We keep absorbing the cost within the budget for special projects, stuff that we couldn't plan on.
That's, that's, that's exactly right.
And we do this every year. I mean, it seems like we have that nine hundred and ten thousand dollars for something and we absorb it plus a little bit more every, every year. It just seems like, you know, I think three years ago, we took that nine hundred and ten and sort of used it for the next year's budget so we could have special projects that we needed to get done.
It was drawn down in a fiscal year in order to increase our cash balance so we could put special projects in the following fiscal year's budget. So, and it was done this year.
Yeah, and even at that, it's just, that's not enough money. I mean, especially on stuff that we can't plan for. We can't, we couldn't have planned for the stuff with the Westgate.
Well, eventually, what happens is by utilizing debt to complete those projects, you dwindle down your cash reserve that's in the debt. And so, at some point in time, there's going to be, there will be a day of reckoning that the tax rate will have to jump five or six cents. And in that case, you're gonna be close to that rollback rate.
To raise that, say like the five hundred thousand, how many pennies would we have to go up?
Two and a half.
So, and when the day comes that we have to raise our taxes, and even now, just because we have the money, doesn't mean we have to spend it.
No, that's.
And a lot of times that's the attitude. We take, we've got the money, let's spend it.
I mean, if, if you were to consider that, a rate increase for that project, I mean, and I don't, I don't think anyone in the community would say you shouldn't raise the rate to make sure that Laughlin stays. You'd be hard pressed to find anyone that says that's not a worthy project. So, I mean, that's just something, unfortunately, y'all, if I got to raise your hand on it, I don't have to raise my hand on it.
You're just telling us we gotta do it.
Well, it would make.
I'm just saying it would make perfect sense.
Of course. Right. So, we need to take a vote on?
Now, yours, okay, I've thrown out some things for you to consider. So, this meeting is to set a proposed rate. So, if you are going to increase the rate because of the Laughlin project, that would have to be encompassed in this vote.
So, in the M and O or INS?
M and O. And I say M and O because it's not a debt financed project. It is paid for with operating monies of the county.
So, we're at forty point seven right now?
Well, if you lower the, the, if you lower the interest and sinking fund to the four point one one, then your general fund rate is forty three point four four. So, if you raised that by the two cents that you would need to complete a five hundred thousand dollar match for the Westgate.
It's two cents, not two and a half?
Two cents.
Okay. So, that would calculate for a hundred thousand dollar amount of twenty bucks.
So, the fifty, the forty-nine would go up to fifty-one.
So, a hundred thousand dollar value would calculate to twenty dollars, the rate?
Yes.
So, for every hundred thousand dollars that we have in value?
You're at, you're adding twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars of tax in order to pay for, specifically pay for the Westgate.
For the Westgate.
Do we need a vote on that? I mean, I don't know. I just think that, again, I'm gonna repeat myself, but we keep taking on these special projects. At some point, we just can't keep absorbing the cost with the same rate that we have. I just don't know how we keep doing it. And I think we're gonna put ourselves over the last sixteen years, it seems like, you know, we're gonna put ourselves at some point in a position that versus twenty dollars, we're gonna end up having to collect sixty dollars just to be able to make it. I mean, we just can't keep absorbing it. As much as I don't, you know, and I'm not saying that we, you know, I hate to say that we're gonna have, that we're gonna raise taxes. I mean, you know, it's gonna affect us all, but this is a project that we need to get done.
What you will hear, obviously, is next year, is, okay, you raised the rate because of that Westgate project and we agreed, but shouldn't you lower the rate? That's what you will hear. So, be prepared for that conversation because that conversation is coming.
By the same token, if we go back and listen to the tapes of our meetings discussing the rate the last four, five, six years, the same words coming out his mouth were said each one of those years. We're gonna have to bite, bite the bullet sooner or later. We're gonna have to bite the bullet and like you said, right now, we've got the reason to do it.
It's been discussed for, since Frank Coronado was here.
You know, I just think it'd help us, well, not only us, it's gonna help anybody else that's here ten, twelve years from now. I mean, we don't wanna put it, whoever's gonna be here ten, twelve years from now in a position that we.
Rhetoric that's, that's from our presidential candidates now. They have all discussed the possibility of reducing the number of bases.
Yeah, we can't afford, we can't afford not to help.
It'd be devastating to this community if you lost Laughlin. And.
And just to add to that, Frank, but we also have heard from the Madison Group that this year, they're seven hundred pilots short. So, they actually want us to increase the pilot training here. So, it's good for our base, it's bad for the general defense budget, but it's also good for our base. And if we prepare ourselves for that, I think it's gonna increase our base too.
And to prepare, it's gonna take money.
Right. I mean, I, I think that's what we need to do. You guys are the ones that are gonna be here. I, oh, I can, I can see that Mr. Moreland, he called me and told me to do it.
Let me say one thing, Frank, concerning the tax rate. If we increase the tax rate, that's fine to be able to finance the Westgate. But if we're gonna increase our tax rate and increase our property value, we gotta be careful and be fair to, to the people of the county, the community, the citizens. If we can't do both, I mean, you know, it wouldn't seem fair to the people.
Commissioner Nelson also voiced that, that concern to me also, exactly that. He felt because of the increase in valuations, that it wasn't the right time to raise rate. So, I'm just, I had that conversation with Commissioner.
But our values seem like they increase a little bit every year.
Yeah, well. Well, the reason that is, is because we went for years under the, the old direction of the appraisal district that did not address the valuation problem. And so, and I've, I've experienced it personally. You know, the amount has increased significantly. But to be truthfully honest, the value that was there five years ago was way underbought, so.
Well, not only that, we're the only entity, I think, or one out of, I mean, there's two other entities. It seemed like they raised, not only does the value go up, but they raised the rate every year. This entity, Valverde County, has not raised it in sixteen years.
But when they increase, excuse me, I'm sorry. But when they increase the value, it's like you're increasing the tax rate, you know?
No, no, I understand.
So, I mean, it's one or it's the other. But we can't do both and.
But the valuations that we utilize for our tax rate calculation are the same valuation that the city and the school use. So, we're, those, and I don't, I'm not trying to compare the county to those two entities. But the fact is, even though the valuations increase for all of the taxing entities, not just for Valverde County.
And they still increase the rate. And they have increased the rate after the values have gone up.
Yes.
I'm just saying, and I'll say it again, we can't keep doing this with the same rate. I know our values go up, but we just gave the most money in raises, not only by dollar amount, by percentage in what we've ever done. Okay, well, we have special projects. Every time we turn around, we have a special project that we're dumping a hundred and seventy-five, three hundred thousand dollars in, a hundred and fifty thousand, forty thousand, a hundred thousand, eighty thousand. I mean, and we're continuing to move forward. And yes, we've been able to do it, but when something like Laughlin comes along that we could not have planned for, it's just hard to absorb that cost. And there's no place to absorb it. And when we're trying to keep a reserve within our interest and sinking, something that our auditors and the state and everybody can live with, and then we're trying to keep a little bit of money within our general fund that since two thousand and eight, we've been dinged on because we don't have enough reserve in there because we're using it for. because we're using it for everything else. I mean, if if our tax, if we don't collect the tax dollars, uh, what we're projected need to collect or 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 something, or G O lowers their dollars, uh, I just think at some point, you have to raise it. If nothing else, you brought up the question right now, you know, i- if you do this in order to be able to pay for that, it doesn't mean you need to keep that rate, because a specific rate increase was to pay for a specific need. Once that need is paid for, then do away with with the tax rate.
I mean, that that's that's an option. The other side of that argument is everyone is gonna say, once you raise them, you never lower them.
Well, but but there's, no, there's gonna be enough of us up here, I think, in the next, the following year. I think you have two over there that don't wanna raise the tax rate. So why, I mean, naturally, they'd vote to lower it after the after the debt is paid. And I mean, I, you know, I think it makes sense that if you raised it to pay for that debt, debt's paid, why wouldn't you lower it?
You know, I mean, and that, that, obviously, that'll be a decision for the court.
And that's what I'm getting at, it's still gonna be our decision to come back at the end of the year, at the end of next fiscal year, and we start all this all over again, and we have that right to lower it. So if the debt's been paid, why wouldn't we lower it?
Frank?
Yes, sir.
If we go to the four point one one on the INS and forty-three point four four on the M and O, then you're still suggesting that we go up a little bit on the forty-three point four four?
Yeah, it'd be forty-five point four four.
Forty-five point four four. And the, uh-
And and-
The market will stay at two point four three, or it'd be one point eight?
If you were gonna raise the, I mean, I think you need to raise the the farmer market rate.
Leave it where it's been suggested.
At the two point four three. But you, um, it, um, the the only thing a rollback, um, would affect is the farmer market rate. Because that's the only one that is exceeding the rollback rate. The general fund rate is not exceeding.
Yeah, forty-five, forty-four four.
Right. Let me see what the- Rollback rate for the general fund is fifty-three point one four.
Let me look in there. Oh, I'll go ahead and make the motion that, um, we set the M and O rate at forty-five point four four, the farm to market at two point four three, and the INS at four point one one.
I agree with that.
Well, no, no, we're not-
Yeah, right, B?
The proposed rate?
The proposed rate, not the-
Forty-five, forty-four four? And four point one one?
No. Yes, four point one one on the INS and two point four three on the farm to market.
I second it.
Okay, you second that, any more discussion?
Would it be fifty-one ninety-eight?
Fifty-one ninety-eight.
And and just for all clarity, that that, that, uh, two, two points or whatever, the two cents, I mean, that is, it would be specifically to pay for the old bridge or the what it was, it would cost to pay?
So, if I understand correctly, then what, um, once we add the two cents in, how many dollars that that increases, there'll be a line item put in the final budget that'll be for the Westgate project for whatever that increase was.
But but we cannot say it's specifically for that.
No, I'm just saying-
But you can add a line item for that dollar.
We're gonna have to add a line.
Yes, definitely. Okay, anybody else? Okay, there's a motion and a second?
Excuse me, there's, uh, something else that has to be added to that, to that notice. And, uh, and it's something you, it has to be.
No, I didn't bring it with me. Notice at the top? Uh, for the specific, you have to say specifically what you're gonna use that increase for.
Ethan, no.
Nobody didn't go. It's not above the-
No, no, we're not above the rollback.
Rollback is five.
The rollback is fifty-three.
And when there's revenues, when there's more money, that's what they're talking about, just having, making more money.
You'll have to say how many more dollars that's gonna generate.
Not specific amount, but for what reason you have to use it.
Just a reason, it's something here that came out and, uh-
It's totally-
The new thing that came out. Which has already been stated, me too.
Just take the reasons for it.
To meet our obligations for the Westgate project and any other.
It can be very gentle also stating that, but to meet the obligations that we have incurred.
It's the amount of dollars it generates in excess of the proposed effective tax rate, isn't that correct?
Well, this is just a statement saying why we're going up.
Statement of what?
So you don't have to state that's a specific dollar? Okay.
The notice you have to-
The one that says it's cheap is the one that you're gonna use. There's two of them.
There, there's something, you, you, there's something, I don't see it in this, but you have to say how many more dollars it's gonna generate.
Yeah, but we don't have to publicly state anymore.
No, I'm talking about the order that they they pass.
Yeah, every year that we've been here, it-
You remember the name of it?
I I don't. Every year that we've been here, within most motions, it's always been, they will raise X amount of dollars more.
On this one, I'm gonna have to, uh, put the proposed rate, fifteen years rate, the effective tax rate, and the rollback rate. And right here, the new, uh, code here is the rate increase for the purpose of, description of purpose of increase. And that has to be in the paper.
And that can be in the paper, the whole deal, but every time that we've had this meeting, that I've been here, we always had to say, there's how many more dollars it was going to raise.
There's something in in the law that-
Yes, sir.
And I don't know the-
That the entity does not have to be publicly stated.
No, no, but it was every, like, again, for the last five years, we, it's always been how many more dollars it's gonna raise.
Yeah, but we also have to schedule the public hearing after that, so make sure you keep-
Judge, can we take a little break?
Yeah, we'll take a ten minute break, probably, okay?
This additional language required was here, this was a-
It's gonna generate six and a half twenty dollars.
Okay, INS can back.
This is what the language they're talking about, which now requires.
I mean, it's part of the motion.
Yeah, that's why.
So we may want to give it to the commissioners.
Yeah. This is threshold wording, there has to be something in that motion. Okay.
So it doesn't, they don't want the amount?
They don't want the amount.
They don't, they don't need that.
Specific statement.
It's that.
You don't have to be specific about it.
Don't have to be specific. Okay, you want to amend your motion, go ahead.
No, sir, no. Can I just go ahead and restate the motion?
Sure.
Counselor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that, um, the rates, the proposed rates be set at, uh, the M and O, forty-five point four four, farm to market, two point four three, and the interest in sinking at four point one one. And the governing body of Valverde County proposes to use revenue attributed to the tax rate increase for the purpose of funding mandatory services required by the state legislature and the effects of inflation on basic services.
I'll second that.
Second, any other discussion?
That was actually simpler than the one we've been doing before, right?
All right, on this one, we need to do a roll call, sit the way through, how would you vote?
I.
I.
I, myself?
I.
Four I's, one absent, thank you. All right, now, the other thing is, we need to schedule a public hearing, I think the first, uh, uh, when was the first public hearing scheduled according to those?
Be seven days after we published, and the earliest we can publish is Sunday, so that would be, uh, Monday, the twenty-second.
And then we just have to sit the one way?
Just just one public here? Two, two.
That's what I'm saying, but what's the next one?
What's the next one?
The following would be three days after?
But but because you guys-
You could do that in twenty-sixth?
But you guys won't be here.
Right.
So that hour on Monday is what, the twenty-eighth?
Would that be okay, Judge?
Yes.
Nine o'clock on both?
Around nine o'clock on both.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, first, public hearing for a proposed tax rate be held on Monday, the twenty-second, at nine AM here in this courtroom. The second public hearing will be set on, for Monday, the twenty-ninth of August, nine o'clock here in this courtroom.
Okay.
Jesus Christ.
Tuesday, Monday, Monday.
Monday, oh.
Okay, do I need a second for that?
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner, any comment on that?
No.
Okay, do we need a roll call on this one too, James? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. I, all those opposed, nobody? Now, the other thing is, before we leave, uh, any elected office anticipate an increase in salaries? Because there have to also be a public list for that, anybody anticipate an increase in salaries?
For the elected office.
For the elected offices? Nope?
Other than what was posted.
Yeah, I didn't know this was posted already. Okay, if not?
Judge, can you please announce the day of the, uh, or the contemplating date for the, uh, budget workshop?
Okay, I said the first budget workshop will be, uh, Wednesday, the six, sixteen, seventeen? Which will be, uh, next Wednesday, will be a, uh, bu- budget workshop. Any other?
Is it gonna be here?
Yes.
Nine o'clock?
You know, Judge, uh, it seems like we're a little bit lighthearted up here, but we do get a lot of stuff done. And we appreciate Martin showing up and giving us his approval also to raise the taxes. I would juice smile, he did.
He was shaking his head.
Uh, any other comments? If not, all those, uh, then this means a jerk.
That was good.